Thank you. First, I just want to apologize for taking a little bit more time than expected. Before we were out of recess, certainly we were presented with the paperwork, with the technical amendments and whatnot, and had to take a little bit of time to work our way through that as a caucus to be prepared to address these very important city issues today. I make a motion to approve the revenue and expenses for the 2025-2026 City of Milford budget as recommended by the Board of Finance.
Second, the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman, Murrenne.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment on the Board of Education budget, referring to page 94, account 1005054796. Finance Board recommends $114,7417. I would like to return the $1.3 million that was reduced by the Board of Finance and restore it back to the original budget amount of $115,304,923.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Murrenne.
If I may. We have heard a public outcry for three years in a row for our Board of Education. I do not need to repeat the many things that were articulated by those interested in investing in our children. An investment in our children is an investment in our community. We have heard that over and over and over again. We know people move to Milford because of our public school system. If you were to look at the financial impact of returning the $1.3, if we were to take a home with a median value of $475,000, the amount that an individual would pay for an increase in their taxes per year would be $55. Seems like a reasonable way to invest in our children. We have asked the Board of Ed to do a long-term facility plan, and they have been working diligently to do so. We have seen some progress in the performance of our young people with the forward movement we have made with the education. And here we are, as one parent said, ready to pull the rug out from underneath them. In order to go forward, we need tools, and in order to have those tools, we need funds. What was presented to us, and we've heard this too before, was a bare-bones budget. How many times do we need to hear the same information over and over and over again? To continue to think that the Board of Education is a place to cut funds is short-sighted, not just for our children, but for our community. I have spoken to parents who want to leave Milford because this has been a repeat of three years in a row. The first year, we were able to restore. The last two years, not so. I will close with this, although I have so much more I could say, and I hope that there are ears that are listening and minds that are focused on what we're actually doing. But I heard this quote, and I'll paraphrase it. I've heard it twice over the last couple of weeks, and most recently heard it at the Boys and Girls Clubs' celebration. And that is, "Don't tell me what you value. Let me look at your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." So here we have a budget. Please, let's show the citizens of Milford what we value.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Peter.
If I may briefly ask a technical question through you to Alderman Murrenne. Alderman Murrenne, would you kindly repeat the total of the amount of this line item you'd like it to lead to? I just want to get that figure, please. Okay.
Do I have it incorrect?
No, you have it correct, and I do appreciate that you rounded up. I just wanted to give the exact difference in case you make a motion. The actual increase would be $1,287,506 would be the increase. Thank you.
Sorry, I thought it was the total that I had to give. I didn't do the math. That's your job, I guess, right? Thanks.
Alderman Murrenne, was that a motion?
I think the motion was made and seconded. We're in discussion on the amendment.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I want to thank everybody who has been waiting so patiently in the audience tonight, both in person and watching us on YouTube. Please know that in addition to the exhaustive conversations and impassioned pleas we make in front of you, there are hours and hours and hours of dialogue and negotiation and communication on both sides of the aisle. And I want you to know that this has taken up so much of our mental real estate over the past few months. And I would like to just tell everybody who's watching this, pay attention to how everyone votes. I think come budget time, we have fairly short memories by the time the election rolls around. I think the public has made it overwhelmingly clear what they value and what's prioritizing. I'm just, I'm speaking. I'm speaking, Mr. Vitale. And I just would ask that everybody pay attention to their representative and see just how they vote and what they value in this city. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. Alderman Federico.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, thank you through you to the board. I just want to echo what Alderman Murrenne has said. I think she said it very, very eloquently. I think that some folks on our board and some folks in the audience have poured their hearts out to us. You know, the same thing happened last year and the year before, but last year it didn't pass. So I'm really, you know, really hoping we can do something again this year, but we'll see. We'll see what happens with the vote. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am in favor of Alderman Murrenne's proposal and amendment to this, and the reasons why are succinctly. I know that Dr. Kataya and her senior administration, and I have documents before me, have worked hard and strategically relative to trying to mitigate any potential loss in the budget. And they continue to use zero-based budget management initiatives in just-in-time purchasing and practices. And the documents that are before me are from March 31 of 2025, the special meeting that was held for the Board of Education. Dr. Kataya had submitted, you know, also a mitigation report with a number of things in case these funds were not returned, but it identified the shortcomings of not having these programs funded and what the net impact would be, you know, to students. And when we look at the final analysis of, you know, returning these funds back, I fully recognize that they're working every day to achieve the financial efficiencies that are necessary. I can remember a return of a surplus of over $600,000 by the Board in Dr. Kataya's efforts. I think we should move forward, fund this, and they are mindful of the fiscal restraints and the issues relative to taxes and the enrollment-related issues. And I know we're going to be moving collectively together in a positive way to ensure that the mission of delivering a very positive education experience for all of our children will be the net outcome. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to our fellow Alderman, as well as the citizens of Milford. I agree with Alderman Murrenne's statement that if you want to know what is valued, look at the budget. Unfortunately, my feelings continue to be, when I look at the budget, that there are expenses in there that are extraneous. I have heard from too many citizens of Milford. I have heard from teachers. I have heard from individuals who are upset that there is a threat to close a school where expenditures are placed in areas that seem extraneous. The offering of the budget by the Board of Education has exceeded the, what seems to be, a reasonable tolerance for the citizens of Milford with regard to increasing the potential taxes. I've had parents come to me upset that there are summer activities offered without consideration for the fear of closing a school. I implore the Board of Education to take a hard look at the needs versus the wants. And so, as I said, I do agree with Alderman Murrenne's statement, but I do not agree with adding back the $1.3. I will be voting no.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call and vote. Mr. Secretary.
Alderman Arceola?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Federico?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
No.
Alderman Healy?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman Marlowe?
No.
Alderman Murrenne?
Yes.
Alderman Pacelli?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
Eight yes, seven no.
The eight yes, seven no. Thank you. This vote needs a 10 supermajority, so the motion, the amendment fails. Alderman Federico.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on page 94 of the general fund expenditure, account 1005-054796584001 for education operations, to increase that line item by $400,000 from 114,017,417 to 114,417,417, for a new subtotal of 114,417,417, and a new department total of 114,417,417.
Second.
Amendment was, the amendment was made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Arceola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had sort of anticipated how this vote would go. I think everybody in this room did. And so, this is our attempt at a little bit of an olive branch. This is a number that through Alder Federico's exhaustive efforts, we've come to as sort of a compromise. This is a dollar amount that we can give back to the Education Department that will not move the needle in any significant way in terms of the tax burden on our residents. In fact, we did the math out, and this, if you own a home worth $475,000, it would cost you $17 a year, which is one-half of an Arizona iced tea a month. I can afford half an Arizona iced tea, I think, and I'd be, I would give a full Arizona iced tea if it meant restoring some money to the Board of Education. I think this would be an excellent compromise, and it would show goodwill on both sides that we do value education. We do value the work we put in, and we value the youth and future of our city. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may, through you to the board. Yes, as Alderman Arceolo mentioned, this is an attempt at compromise. This is an olive branch. This is our attempt to find some number that perhaps, perhaps two Aldermen on the other side of the aisle could live with. I don't know, but we had to try. As I said earlier, last year, I poured my heart out. The citizens, residents who have come before us have poured their hearts out trying to, you know, fully reinstate or partially reinstate this budget. And, you know, if we don't pass this, you know, we have this document from the Board of Education that shows some things that they could cut. So they're going to have a real, I think, a real Sophie's Choice here between either closing a school or cutting programs that support our students in everyday learning. You know, cutting programs like STEM and world language that broaden learning, removing the educational support structure that helps support our students and helps them to achieve and be successful. We heard from Dr. Kataya that the test scores are moving in the right direction. There was a lot of talk about that last year, and it saddens me that the very folks that, you know, were so critical of test scores last year are now willing to support, to support a change that could turn around and decrease those test scores. You know, it really feels like the Board of Education can't win, no matter what it chooses. So I am hoping, really, really hoping, you know, that we can get support on this motion to at least put $400,000 back into the education account. You know, it's not the $1.3 million, but the $400,000 would be better than nothing. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask for a quick recess?
Yes.
Thank you.
Recession. We're back from recess. Any more discussion on the amendment? I do not see any, so we have time for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call and vote. Mr. Secretary.
Alderman Arceola?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Federico?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
No.
Alderman Healy?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman Marlowe?
No.
Alderman Murrenne?
Yes.
Alderman Pacelli?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
Eight yes, seven no.
The vote is eight yes, seven no, and this, this vote has to be a majority vote, which is 10, and so the amendment fails. Alderman Pacelli.
Thank you, Chairman Vitro. I make a motion to amend on page 8, general fund revenue, account 054000-483901, increase from $6 million to $7 million for a new subtotal of $7 million and a preliminary total of $263,836,839.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. To our Finance Director, Peter, can you help us in further explain what this refers to as far as mill rate is impacted? We have a reeval coming up, so how does it all impact if we don't vote on this?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Vitale. These two changes are part of a set of technical changes that historically the Finance Director recommends to the boards, respectively. The Board of Finance gets its own set of technical corrections, and the Board of Aldermen each year. Regarding these two line item increases, they are increases to revenue, which, which I have looked at and have analyzed. And to get to the point of your question that these changes would help to lower the mill rate. So if they are not approved, the mill rate would not decrease, and so they, they keep taxes at a higher level. I would like to add, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that, for example, the Milford power plant pilot is important, because that pilot agreement has expired as of this fiscal year, and we need another pilot agreement. This is one of Milford's major taxpayers, one of the two power plants that exist, and I don't want to get too much in the detail. And I don't want to get too much in the details because the negotiations have not been completed. They are in the process. And so the bottom line is that they will owe taxes to the city of Milford. And based on the meetings I've had, the discussions I've had, the data that I have been given, I have made a prudent decision as the Finance Director to recommend this amount so that we can account for the Milford Power Plant's tax obligation in, in the most conservative way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Alderman Pacelli.
Thank you, Chairman Vitro. Through you to Peter. Just to be clear, the amendment that was made was reflective of the first of the amendments on the sheet. There's not yet an amendment related to the second item. You were talking about the pilot agreement. Just correct me if I'm wrong. That is the second item?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
The first item is...
Yes, I apologize if I made a mistake. If you could remind me, you, you are saying that you were only making a motion on one line item, not the two?
Correct, we're going to go through one at a time. So the amendment that's on the floor now relates to the first item.
Okay. Which is the appropriated fund balance or...
The six million to seven million.
Yes, that's the increase in the appropriated fund balance from six million to seven million, yes. And so, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, both line items, and we'll, we'll get to the second one, I understand that. But focusing on this one, it is a revenue increase of a million dollars. And keep in mind that we have to look at these things up until the last minute and try to use the tools that we can to the best of our ability to try to mitigate the tax increase to the citizens of the city of Milford. And so keep in mind a couple of factors that we are going into a revaluation year next year, as Alderman Vitale mentioned. So, you know, we have to consider the mill rate, try to set it at a, at a reasonable level because of the impact of that reeval that it will have on the taxpayers because we do anticipate values have gone up, particularly in the real estate area. And so that's the background and I'll pause at this moment if you have further questions. Thank you.
As a, as a follow-up, and I'm not sure I'm, I'm clear as to where this million dollars is coming from. Can you explain how it is that this amendment would add another million dollars to the fund? And therefore do what you said it would do?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Pacelli. Yes, this, this adding this extra million would help to lower the mill rate. Would help to lower the mill rate, offset a tax increase. One of the things that, to be, to contemplate is that we had, if you recall, lost that $67 million in the motor vehicle grant list or the grant list had come down. We were trying to make up that 1.4 million. So that is also something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm, and I'm not being difficult when I ask. I don't feel like I'm getting an answer. Where is the money coming from?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. It is coming from the general fund's unassigned fund balance.
Okay, so by, by taking this money out of that fund, putting it into the budget, you're reducing our rainy day fund. We're borrowing. We're borrowing from our future to make a change today, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Thank you. It's with that reason that I will not be able to support this particular amendment. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Finance Director first. I, we're, we're only discussing the first item on this page. I'm sorry, yeah, I was just making a statement. Sorry, I'm waiting for them to finish.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Could you repeat your question?
I didn't start the question yet. So although we are only discussing the first amendment or the first item on this page, I'm struggling with the fact that we received these amendments at 7:00 this evening. We received five and then we received a sixth one sometime after our first recess. I'm going to ask you a tough question. When, when did you have these prepared?
I had these prepared a, a day before the meeting.
So yesterday?
I would say it was at least one to two days before the meet. I believe it was Tuesday afternoon, to be exact.
Okay, thank you. And then what is the communication? I don't know if there's a question for the Mayor, Chief of Staff. What is the communication point from them? Why did we receive these at 7:00 PM tonight?
I'm happy to answer that because I've, I've been through quite a number of these budgets. Historically, these are given as printed copies. In the past, they've been highlighted pages of the budget document. This year, as a courtesy, they were typed up into the motion that would be read as traditionally done. And a copy was provided to all of the Aldermen. In years past, it's been just a legislative leadership.
Thank you. So last year, these were emailed to me, to all of the board at 3:30 PM on the day of the meeting. Still not a ton of time, but that gave us a little bit more time to digest instead of having to waste everyone's time who was sitting here while we tried to understand. I mean, we want to do a good job with this budget and we need to be able to understand what's put in front of us. You know, with all due respect to the Finance Director, you know, we need to understand this before we can vote on it. And I, I don't, I don't know that I feel comfortable voting for any of these adjustments, but we'll see, you know, we'll, we'll see what the, what the answers are. But we have to ask these questions and play this whole thing out, you know, and, and like I said before, waste everyone's time in this meeting when we could have asked questions beforehand. So it's really disappointing.
Mr. Chairman, if I, I may, because I, I feel like a lot is getting construed here. This is the time to ask these questions on the record, in front of the cameras, in front of the audience. The Finance Director is here. We will be here as long as we need to to answer these questions, whether they're tough or not. But we're here to answer them in the light of day and that's what we're looking to do here. So if, if there are questions,
Okay, so I will start with...
We've got folks here to answer them.
Okay, so I will start with some questions. So this brings the general fund revenue, I'm sorry, the general fund, the unassigned fund balance down an additional million dollars. So Peter, Mr., sorry, Finance Director, Eradici, can you give us the history of the balances in that fund? What does this do to the fund balance at the end of 2026 fiscal year? Where, where were we at 2025? Where were we at 2024? Can you give us some sense of the history and, and how we can be comfortable with this?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Federico. Well, I, I will remind the board that the unassigned fund balance was left off as currently at 24 mil, 24.3 million. And as you saw with the Mayor's budget and the Board of Finance, they approved 6 million, the use of fund balance. This adds another million to 7 million. So that would bring the fund balance to 17.3 million, $17,365, uh, $365,000. And that would be about with the budget total preliminary that we have for the general fund would leave us at about 6.58% of the total budget. Our policy for the city of Milford adopted by the Board of Aldermen is to have a, a minimum of 5% in the unassigned fund balance. So we would be at 6.58 approximately. So above that minimum policy.
Okay, so let me make sure I got this right. The end of fiscal 2026, we would be at 17.3 million. And at the end of fiscal 2025, we are projected to be at 24.3 million. And where were we at the end of 2024?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The end of 2024 was 24.365 million, as I said. The fiscal year '25 remains to be seen because we haven't closed out the year. So depending on what the level of surplus there is at the end of '25, that would help to replenish some of the use of this fund balance. In prior years, prior administrations, you look back at the past 10 years, the, the use of fund balance was even higher than the 7 million. There were some years when it was 9 million, nine and a half million, 5 million. There is always, there is, has always been a use of fund balance. I was glad to see that it came down to 6 and now we're, we're contemplating or discussing raising it to 7. But we're less than that nine and a half million or 9 million that we've used in, in prior years, for example. In prior years, there have been many years where we've made up for that use of fund balance. So that's always the hope, that we'll have savings on the expenditure side, have healthier revenues, revenues above budget in certain line items that would help replenish the use of this fund balance. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I have a couple more questions on this. So what changed between when the budget went before the Board of Finance and now to increase the use of this fund balance from 6 million to 7 million?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Federico. What, what changed is that, again, that's what, the, the power plant was one line item. I, I had alluded to the motor vehicles, but really that, that could be set aside. The, the power plant agreement, and like I said, I don't want to get into the weeds because I don't want to reveal information that could compromise potential litigation. But if, if you, if you don't get, for example, the full amount of the pilot, for instance, just say hypothetically, then this million dollars could help offset that. That's, that's one way to look at it. But I'm not trying to beat around the bush. I think we all are concerned about the Milford taxpayers. That has always been our discussion year after year. And this is, I know, a, a tough line item, but it is something that previous Mayors and boards and administrations have used each year. I know it's something we have to decide on carefully. And so, again, I'm here to answer if you have further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do have further questions. So from a fiduciary responsibility standpoint, I do understand the history that this has been dipped into higher amounts, lower amounts. It varies from year to year. I want to also get an understanding of where we're going to be at with another fund, a reserve fund, and that's the Health Insurance Reserve Fund. So I know it's, it's not part of this line item, but it is part of the reserves that we hold in the city. And it concerns me that we're dipping into both of these, right? So you and I had exchanged emails earlier confirming the amount that, that that fund is going down. And in my notes, I had, I think we were starting at 14.3 at the end of 2024, planning to use 4.5 million in fiscal 2025 and planning to use 8 million in fiscal 2026, bringing that balance down to 1.8 million. And from what you had told me earlier, the recommendation is for that to be about 10% of the expected claims. And I believe the expected claims for that fiscal year are $48 million. Am I correct so far?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that sounds about right.
Okay. So, so that fund should really be at 4.8 million and is projected to go down to 1.8. So there's a, there's a $3 million shortage there in the healthcare fund. And now we're proposing to take another million dollars out of our other reserve fund. This, this makes me very uncomfortable.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Federico. Just give you a little background because I know you're new here. My predecessor, former Mayor, took out 11 million, 13 million when I was on this board, sitting in your chair. And I resent the fact that you used the, the comment wasting time. This meeting was scheduled to start at 7:00. You took an hour of time to go over these. You call our Finance Director more than any other Alderman on this board, okay? And you know that and you're laughing because you know it's true.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm laughing.
Our Aldermen do scold the Mayor.
You're way off the...
This is not appropriate amendment. You do not scold our Aldermen for doing their jobs. Inappropriate.
Mr. Chairman, if I may have the floor back. First of all, so yes, the Mayor has reminded me twice that I'm new here. But I have been working with, he's new to sitting in that chair, yes. But I've been working with budgets and financials for like 30-plus years of my career. To be, to be completely truthful, first of all, I've never called the Finance Director. I usually email and he answers when he has time, whatever. You know, the, the throwing the hands up, the making the faces, it's not a big win for you with voters. I think you should realize that. But anyways, I sent him, I think, three emails this week. Now, I got a message from leadership that folks wanted this meeting to be orderly. And I got a message that we should ask our questions in advance. So I did. So we came prepared. We asked questions in advance. We came prepared to discuss and vote on a budget tonight. And at 7:00 PM, we got six, some major, some minor. We got six changes at 7:00 PM. Yes, we took an hour to discuss it. I think that's fair. I think we should take in more time, to be completely honest with you. Because we, it's more important that we do a good job when we're voting on this budget for the citizens of Milford than, you know, have the meeting go the way you would like it to go, which would be for us to just vote yes on everything, give you a flat tax rate and let you run on that in your campaign. I'm sorry. But as my colleagues have said, some of your comments there were out of line. I'm sure you're going to continue to make similar comments towards me. But I'm trying to do the best job I can for our citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we recess, please?
Recession. Thank you.
We're out of recess. I don't even know what the hell we're on. On discussion on the first amendment, is there any more discussion? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Finance Director, if I could, Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. Mr. Odiyisi, this one million dollars that's being moved over from the unappropriated fund balance that you've recommended here, it's your recommendation as the city's primary financial advisor that we make this move?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Smith. I wouldn't say that I recommend the move, but I am comfortable with the move if you were to approve it. I think that's a fair way to say it. Thank you.
And could you tell me as well, you said earlier that a 5% policy was adopted by this board. Where did that 5% number come from?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That 5%, it goes back several decades, maybe even more than that. It was always an administrative policy that was noted in our audited financial statements in the notes section, in the introduction section. And as I had explained to people in the past, the rating agencies kept pressing us each year to say, yes, we respect that you have that 5% policy and you abide by it, but we prefer that the Board of Alderman, the legislative body, formally adopt it so that it's solidified. And so I believe that was done by the Board of Alderman in February of 2017, I believe. They adopted it formally. Thank you.
And the unappropriated fund balance right now is sufficient that this transfer that's before us now is well within the 5%, we're well above the 5% threshold?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Smith. Yes, we would be above the 5% threshold.
Thank you, Mr. Finance Director. So if we were to, and I know we're only on the first one, Mr. Finance Director, I know we're only on the first one, but if all six of these proposals here, these technical adjustments were adopted, the end result would be that the City of Milford would have a mill rate decrease. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Smith. Yes, just as a preview, the entire set of increases/decreases would result in a $3,766,756 reduction in current year taxes. So that would reduce the taxes by about $3.766 million, and that would lower the mill rate.
All right, so if these technical corrections, of which we're now speaking about the very first one, which are being recommended here, were adopted, the City of Milford would have a tax decrease?
Through you, Mr. Chairman Alderman Smith. Yes, that is fair to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Finance Director. So with respect to this, we're on this first one here on the 6 to 7 million. It's well within the financial parameters laid out by the bonding houses and the rating agencies. It's an amount that's available to us, and it is part of a larger presentation here that will result in a tax decrease for the City of Milford. This strikes me as not only prudent and good policy, but what the citizens of Milford have been asking for. And so I think this is the first of six line items, and I would urge its adoption by this board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Pacelli.
Thank you. Through you to the Board of Alderman. I take a little bit of exception to calling any of these items technical. These are changes to the budget. These are not technical. These are legitimate, important, detailed changes to the budget that, again, were presented to us almost two hours ago to digest and address. And I just, you know, we can call them what we want, but these are big changes and not anything technical in nature. Secondly, just through you to Finance Director Odichi. Again, just going back to this, these funds are being taken from a reserve fund. Once they are taken and put into this budget, they are gone. And we are in a time of economic uncertainty. There are very many people right now that are, from what I read and from the people I talk to, that are drowning in debt, that are having a hard time with many different aspects tonight. I would hate to see, you know, temporary relief given by taking from what the city has put away to artificially attempt to, as part of a host of amendments that seem geared towards getting to a point rather than actually addressing them individually, one-on-one. For that reason, I just can't vote for this. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, if it was that important, we should have had this more than five minutes after the meeting was supposed to start. I just can't accept that. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to my fellow Alderman. You know, it's interesting that we bring up that there's a point of uncertainty. We had an opportunity to decrease the tax a month or so ago when we talked about the car tax. That was an opportunity to reduce the mill rate. We have a revaluation coming up. We all know that the likelihood is that our taxes are going to increase as the value of properties are increased. The state of Connecticut is putting forth a budget that is no doubt going to increase the tax burden on our citizens. So I agree that this is prudent, this is good for our citizens because it reduces the tax burden, it negates part of the tax burden that we are going to see over the course of the next year due to a number of these factors. In the past 12 years, this is the first time we have the opportunity to have pensions funded, to have city departments funded, and taxes coming in flat or going down. And I've heard a number of people come up during the public comment and talk about the fact that our mayor ran on education. Well, I distinctly recall that our mayor ran on education, on public safety, and on a reasonable tax basis. And we have been doing that over the course of these past two years, and this is an opportunity to continue to do that. I think it is foolish not to offer this opportunity to the citizens of this town so that we offset those tax burdens.
Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, through you to the Board. The conversation that we just had about the health care, the health insurance fund, I just want to revisit that for a minute because we need to look at the city's reserves holistically, not just this one single account. And so we have a shortfall of $3 million based on our policy of what should be reserved in the health insurance fund. Now, I know there's going to be no appetite on this board to raise the contributions to that fund, but I personally think we should keep this $1 million in the rainy day fund in case it's needed to cover health insurance. That's my first point. My second point is this car tax thing just keeps coming up. We've already voted it down, but, you know, we voted it down for a reason, and it was insinuated that we didn't understand it. That's completely not true. We understood it. We understood that when you raise the values, I did an example of a car that's worth $34,000 original MSRP at the projected mill rate of 29.58, if it was a five-year-old car, the taxes would go up about $50. The taxes would go up about $50 by making the value higher. Then if the mill rate was lowered, as was said that night, by 0.22, then that person, that car owner, would save five bucks from the lower mill rate. So they're still paying $45 more. And then if you were a homeowner, I did the math, for a homeowner whose home is valued at $475,000, they would save 73 bucks. So if you've got two cars and your home is at that value, you're paying $17 more. Maybe if you have, you know, if you have one car, maybe you make out. I mean, it could go up and down for individuals, but we had to look at that one holistically too. And when we look at who pays motor vehicle taxes, it's residents. Who pays real estate property taxes? It's residents and businesses. So the point is that if taxes need to increase, they should be increased fairly, and that increase should be shared fairly between residents and businesses. We understood it. We understood it very well, and we voted it down, and I don't know why it keeps coming up. That's it for me. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I heard some discussion about this car tax. It does keep coming up, and I think...
不能再有讨论关于车税的讨论了?
我不是要讨论关于车税的，先生
你刚才提到了它
你之前是对的，现在就做 你说不要提高关税 Alderman Pacelli这里谈论了人们负债 他们确实如此这里投票将是提高关税的投票 正确的人，Alderman Pacelli说的，正在负债 正确的人，你两年前正在帮助他们 现在再帮他们 你两年前是对的，现在就做
首长，我想叫停一下，麻烦
Chairman, I'd like to call for a recess, please.
We are out of recess. Alderman Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman Vitro. Through you, just as commentary, in response to some of what Alderman Smith said, I am voting no on this tentative agreement, and I see it as what it is, rating one fund for another. Now, we've had a lot of discussion that this is done in the past, this is a past practice. That may have been true, but that was when these funds were increasing. It was a different time, a different place. The funds were used, there were lots of transfers, but there was a booming grand list, it was a different economic time, and the healthcare insurance wasn't decreasing in the way that it is. So this is, and now we're going to have to say it out loud, this is asking us to help you to use funds from the general fund, from the health insurance fund, from the rainy day fund, et cetera, and we haven't even been able to figure these out because we did get them late. Use those funds to keep the mill rate from rising, to keep the taxpayers down, to deprive the Board of Ed of what we think you could easily find in the same fashion, some money, but pay Board of Ed. And we're not going to do it. And I'm tired of hearing that by not voting, or voting not to tax senior citizens on residential property to increase car taxes, that somehow that we are responsible for not taking a cut in the mill rate. It just, you know, stop saying it. And that's all. But that's why I'm voting no, and I understand it. I also don't, I understand technical agreements, I know them, we've done it before, and I understand the 5% recommendation from our auditors. That used to be a convention, the auditors said you should have the legislative body authorize it into law. So the fact that we can borrow that much doesn't mean that that's what we should be doing now. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I, you know, I look at this and I say, okay, so here's an opportunity to save on the city side. And if, okay, let's go back to, if we had a surplus in the, on the city side, there might have been an opportunity to put that into the Board of Ed, but we didn't know. And I'm not going to vote to raise taxes by putting money back into the Board of Ed, and now I'm hearing you guys are going to vote this down, which is going to make taxes go up more. I see this as an opportunity to save money. If we want to reexamine the Board of Education after saving on this end, I'm amenable to that.
Any more discussion on the, Alderman Arceola?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I'd actually like to speak to, respond to Alderman Jenkins' proposal there. That's interesting. In this hypothetical, would a full restoration be possible? I'll allow it. Not if it raises the tax base. If we can find a way to come in with a flat budget, I don't think that's possible. The other side of that, though, is I feel like our Board of Education has to have some culpability, some skin in the game here, not come in at a 4.8% increase. I would be more than amenable to putting some money back, but they got to meet us, they got to work with us, it's a team.
Is there any, can I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Let's try to stick to the amendment, all right? Is there discussion on the amendment?
I have no comment on the amendment.
All right, let's put it for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote. Mr. Secretary, please.
Alderman Arceola?
No.
Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Federico?
No.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Healy? Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman Marla?
Yes.
Alderman Malrennen?
No.
Alderman Paselli?
No.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitelli?
Yes.
Alderman Willis? Seven yes, eight no.
Seven yes, eight no. The amendment fails. Alderman Paselli.
Please to make a motion to amend on page eight, General Fund Revenue, count 054000-483833, increase from $4,700,000 to $6,400,000 for a new subtotal of $9,186,786, and a new preliminary total of $263,836,839.
The amendment was made in second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Paselli.
Thank you, Chairman Vitro. Through you, to the Finance Director. It's been a while since you initially mentioned this, and I think we could use a refresher already. If you could please explain this, and then I may have a few questions after you go through that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Paselli. Before I answer, I just wanted a quick comment. I respect where the question came about, the semantics of characterizing these as technical corrections or adjustments, they're not really technical. I totally respect your, what you said, and understand where you're coming from, especially in line of the appropriated fund balance. But there are a vast majority of these line items that are really, I firmly believe are technical. Like, we'll get to the pension one where it relates to the actuarial valuation report and the health insurance update, and so this one is another one that's technical. The Milford Power Plant Pilot Agreement is in negotiations. If you were, may have heard with the Board of Finance, they had increased a line item called revaluation operations in the finance by $40,000 because we needed an expert appraisal done on this Milford power plant. And that appraisal was done by a reputable expert company, and so that is where this change is coming from, that we have an appraisal, we have professional expertise to help support a projected value for a pilot, and so it would be prudent to adjust for that, knowing that there will be a potential change in this line item. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. I have a little bit of experience in my non-Alderman life related to tax agreements, pilot agreements, and whatnot, and in my experience, they are negotiations, and there are times that negotiations go one way or they go the other. And this board has not been briefed in any way in executive session by the city attorney on this matter, so there are questions that I would like to ask, there's answers that I would want to have, and frankly, if I had this in advance, I probably would have done. So I'm very leery of, you know, again, at the risk of sounding repetitive, of making a change based on a request for which I don't have enough information to make a, you know, an intelligent, educated decision. I do respect that, you know, you have an opinion on this and certainly have put it forth, or at least have supported it in some way, but that's very different than voting on a matter, making a mistake, and then having to own up to that later. It's also my understanding, I think I heard you say, or someone mentioned, that the existing agreement, that the current tax is still in place, hasn't expired yet. So this is a maybe in the future based on an appraisal that may lead to a number that might be equal to or less than that appraisal, and it sounds like a difficult item, again, to be voting on before either we have an outcome or even have been briefed on this by the city attorney. So I just, again, I hate to do this because I feel like it's going to be all over again what we went through before, but I don't know that, absent some new information that I don't have, that I could vote in favor of this, based on what I know of these types of agreements, based upon the information that's limited that you're able to give us, and based upon hope. I really hope that this goes well, I really hope we have a good negotiation, I really hope the city gets, you know, the 6.4 million rather than the 4.7. I do, I hope that happens, I really do. But I don't have any information other than, we hope it happens, we have an appraisal, there's a negotiation, you can't tell us about it, the city attorney hasn't briefed us on it, and it may or may not happen. So I don't know that I can support this. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted just a quick comment. I understand what you're saying, but let's just say there is not an agreement. I agree. There is a possibility there is no agreement. Then by law, the assessor has to send a tax bill to this power plant, and the value of that is projected to be higher than this amount. And so I thought it would be prudent. I think it's not prudent to put in for the maximum value because, again, there is a high probability, just like with the mall, that this will be litigated in court. But there will be an amount that is owed by the company, and it potentially could be higher than that 4.7 million, is what I'm trying to say.
And I appreciate that, and I thank you for that insight. I really do wish I had the benefit of a discussion with the city attorney about this matter prior to being asked to vote on it, but I understand your point. Thank you very much.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none? All in favor?
No.
Oh, is that a hand raise? Alderman Smith.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could, to the Finance Director. So Director of D.C., is it your, is it your opinion that this is a, your professional estimation as to where this will come in somehow?
Through you, Mr. Chairman Alderman Smith, yes. It is, we, I respect what the board is saying, and yes, I respect the, but I will say that we have had many meetings with the city attorney, with the assessor, on this matter, and so that, you know, we have vetted this. The city attorney has led those discussions, those meetings, we've all been appraised, and so we've had a lot of information come to us, and so that's why I made the professional judgment to make this adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Director. So I deem this amendment to be just like the last one. We have here yet another opportunity to help the taxpayers in the city of Milford, and if you vote against this, you are, this is an effective vote to raise taxes. And the last vote was a vote to raise taxes, and here we're about to get a second vote. So you've got one, you've got one vote here tonight to raise taxes, you voted last year to raise taxes, you're getting a chance to vote here again to raise taxes. If you vote this down, you're voting to raise taxes. This is a prudent, professional judgment by the people that this city has employed to give us their best estimates in a budget hearing, and you may not like it for your political purposes, but that's what's in front of us, and I think for you to vote to raise taxes now is wrong. Thank you.
Alderman Paselli.
Thank you. Through you to the Board of Alderman. Alderman Smith, I'm a little bit surprised as an attorney, knowing that agreements happen sometimes, they fall apart sometimes, we have a maybe here. You're the first person typically on this board to rip apart an agreement, explain why it is good, not good, should be changed, shouldn't be changed, and here we have, you know, a maybe. There might be a deal, there might not be a deal, it might be at this number, it might not be at that number, and if it's not, you know, what's the consequence of that? We haven't been briefed by the city attorney, and, you know, I'm a little tired of hearing, if you don't vote in favor of something you know nothing about, you're voting to raise taxes. What I'm going to vote on is the information I have before me, and I do respect the Finance Director's thoughts and opinions, but again, even he's acknowledged that it may be higher, may be lower, may be different, it may not. It's just a very difficult spot to be, and frankly, I'm very surprised to hear you, Alderman Smith, in a gray area like this, being so certain, because typically you're not. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can't see me. You know, there's no gray area here, Alderman Paselli. We got a baseline number, it may come in higher, and this is not a matter of gray area. So this is a pretty easy call. You can go for this cautious number, the number could have been higher. If you wanted to, we can go with a higher number, but this is a baseline, professional recommendation number. This isn't a pig in a poke, so, you know, you can vote to raise taxes, go ahead, but this is one way to ameliorate that.
One, through you to Alderman Smith. Have you been briefed by the city attorney on this matter?
I've been briefed by the city, by the city Finance Director. The city attorney is...
Thank you, thank you. You have not. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to clarify the record, there can be no briefing from the city attorney to this body as it's pending litigation, so that there would not be an executive session now or in the future until this is actively being settled. So just want to clarify that for the record.
Alderman Arceola?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a two-minute recess.
Alderman. Alderman Casey.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, you know, I've been around, you know, for 10 years off and on. Sometimes I didn't win elections, sometimes I did. And, you know, the Peter Adici has been along for all the years I've been here. And we, and even Mr. Rosen has been most of the time. And, you know, they were brought on by the prior administrations, two prior administrations. And, you know, Mayor Blake, and they remain on with Mayor Smith, and with Tony Gennett Tostio. And so we always accepted, I know it's passed, but I don't, I just want to make the point that we always accepted his technical changes. And, you know, and we always asked for an explanation, due diligence. But I didn't remember, like, anything that we came up with it, the list, maybe like 7:30 or 7:00, but it's been done in the past. So you argue that it's different, somewhat different, I think is disingenuous. And I know that we were, but we, you know, we accepted administrations and the Finance Director, and Mr. Rosen is, you know, the, he, all of them, or fine civil service, and they remained on the board, they remained under positions. So that's kind of like disingenuous to say now this is all being political. I think that's like, I think that, you know, I, but, well, that's the, that's the, like, the reality, I guess, of politics, but it's kind of seems unfortunate. So who want to run? Who would want to take this position now, doing, getting attacked, like, you know, and that's not fair to our civil service, and that's really unfortunate.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Take it to a vote, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I misspoke before. I should clarify, if there is pending litigation, there is no pending litigation on this, so I want the record to be correct. So I apologize for that. Ms. Speaker.
Take it to a vote, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I misspoke before. I should clarify, if there is pending litigation, there is no pending litigation on this, so I want the record to be correct. So I apologize for that. Ms. Speaker.
Take it to a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Roll call vote, Mr. Secretary, please.
Alderman Archeola?
No.
Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Federico?
No.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Healy?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Mulrennan?
No.
Alderman Paselli?
No.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitelli?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
No.
Seven yes, eight no.
The amendment fails. Alderman Paselli, next on the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Vitro. I'd like to make an amendment on page 84, general fund expenditure account 0599-8310-529905. Increase from 17 million 300,000 to 17 million 700,000 for a new subtotal of 35 million 157,107 dollars, and a new department total of 35 million 186,507 dollars.
May I entertain a second? Amendment was made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Paselli.
Thank you. Through you to the Finance Director. Could you please be able to explain this particular amendment? Thank you.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. At the time that we did the Board of Finance and Mayor's Budget, we had a projection or estimate from our pension actuary, which we used. He, the firm, has recently released the pension valuation report, and as a result of that official report from the actuary, that attic or actuarially determined employer contribution that is required by the city to contribute to the pension fund went up by 400,000. So it's based on that recent, recently released pension valuation report. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a follow-up question, so this is a requirement, something a little bit different than some of the other things we've talked about that are not requirements, this is a requirement?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes. It is a requirement, and it would be prudent, I urge the board to adopt it so that we can maintain our goal and administrative policy of fully funding the actuarially determined employer contribution to the pension fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Smith, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Finance Director. Director Adici, the, I heard something here about this pension contribution. This would make our pension contribution a full contribution required under the actuarial rules? Is that so?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes. It is through actuarial rules and through their strong recommendation.
And there are other administrations here in Milford that have not fully funded this to the full actuarial requirement, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, that is correct. And I would add that for the past several years, it has to be at least three years or more that we have fully funded the pension. We've made that change, and the rating agencies really pressed us to do that, or they threatened a negative outlook or a potential downgrade if we did not fully fund our pension. Thank you.
So that this is not really a requirement, this board could fund this for less, and in fact historically has funded it for less than the full actuarial projection.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Smith. Technically, that is correct, but as I said, if we don't, you run the risk of underfunding the pension, so the funding rate goes down. And again, I put at the top of the list the rating agencies who have put us on negative outlook in the past, and we were able to reverse that by fully funding the pension. And I am concerned that they would go back to a negative outlook, and they warned us that there would, could be a downgrade if we went back to that pattern of not fully funding the pension. And secondly, by not fully funding it, you actually accrue, for lack of a better word, quote unquote, interest on that liability. And so that interest accrues, it's not forgotten, and so actually, you're putting the city in worse shape because down the road, this contribution would be higher as a result of underfunding it for those years. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Adici. So it's your recommendation, then, that we go with this full 17.7 that appears here before us today?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes. It is my strong recommendation, I urge the board to please adopt this for the good of the city. Thank you.
And Director Adici, the pension now is funded, I know you and I chatted about this at one point, on 82% or 83% of its full, of its full actuarial requirement? Is that where we are about now?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes. We were in the low 80% range, and we will still be in that range as a result of this contribution and the latest report. We will be above, in the low 80% range.
Thank you, Mr. Director. So again, here we are with the recommendation of the director, the Finance Director, and we're at 82%. You know, there was a time, back when, back when I was the city attorney, when the Milford Pension Plan was 125%. And because of actions that didn't follow the Finance Director's recommendations, we're down now into the 80%. And in fact, the past administrations have done this, and it's resulted in a downgrading of the bond rating of the city of Milford. And so it's prudent that this be done as the Finance Director is recommending, and for the first time, I think it needs to be drawn up, that we are fully funding these pension plans on a routine basis. And that is, that is fiscally prudent and appropriate, and, you know, I know it's been kind of a pattern here tonight to ignore the Finance Director. I hope he won't be ignored again on this one. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Take it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Paselli.
Make a motion for an amendment on page 84, general fund expenditure account 0599-8310-529905. Decrease from 10 million 790,713 dollars to 10 million 301,299 dollars for a new subtotal of 35 million 157,107 dollars, and a new department total of 35 million 186,507 dollars.
Second. We have amendment and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Paselli.
Thank you. Through you to the Finance Director. Can maybe please have an explanation on this amendment?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Paselli. This type of changes happened in the past at this level. I'm at the final stage of the budget process because I and the healthcare actuaries and healthcare consultants keep looking at this as close to the budget vote as we can. And the good news is that the negotiations with Anthem led to them lowering the stop-loss premium. So they came in at a high rate of increase of 15%, which is what they normally do. But each and every year, we do our due diligence and make our argument as to saying we really need to lower that, and for a variety of reasons. And so through those negotiations, the good news is that we were able to get them to lower the stop-loss premium, and so I've made the necessary reductions. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Federico?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Finance Director. So is this 489,000, I think that's a dollar amount of the decrease, is that all due to the stop-loss premium?
Yes, that is all due to the stop-loss premium, yes.
Okay. I appreciate your hard work and due diligence in negotiating a lower premium for us, I think that's fantastic. However, I cannot vote to take this account down while we have a $3 million shortfall in the healthcare fund reserve projected. So I will be voting no, but I do want to say I really appreciate your hard work on this. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call vote, Mr. Secretary, please.
Alderman Archeola?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Federico?
No.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Healy?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitelli?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
No.
Nine yes, six no.
Nine yes, six no. Amendment fails. I'm sorry, pass. I'm sorry, pass. Thank you. Alderman Paselli.
Just like to call for a brief recess?
Recession, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, we were in the, the low 80% range, and we will still be in that range as a result of this contribution and the latest report. We will be above eight, in the low 80% range.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Director, so, again, here we are with the recommendation of the director, the finance director, and we're at 82%, you know, there was a time, back when, back when I was the city attorney, when the Milford pension plan was 125%, and because of actions that didn't follow the finance director's recommendations, we're down now into the 80%, and in fact, the past administrations have, have done this, and it's resulted in a downgrading of the bond rating of the city of Milford, and so it's, it's prudent that this be done as the finance director is recommending, and for the first time, I think it needs to be drawn up, that we are fully funding these pension plans on a routine basis, and, and that is, that is fiscally prudent and appropriate, and, you know, I, I know it's been kind of a pattern here tonight to ignore the finance director, I hope he won't be ignored again on this one. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Take it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Paselli.
Make a motion for an amendment on page 84, general fund expenditure, account 05998310-529919, decrease from $10,790,713 to $10,301,299 for a new subtotal of $35,157,107, and a new department total of $35,186,507.
Second.
We have amendment and a second, any discussion? Alderman Paselli.
Thank you, through you to the finance director, can maybe please have an explanation on this amendment?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Paselli, this type of changes happened in the past at, at, at this level, I'm at the final stage of the budget process, because I and the healthcare actuaries and healthcare consultants keep looking at this as close to the budget vote as we can, and the good news is that the negotiations with Anthem led to them lowering the stop-loss premium, so they came in at a, a high rate of increase of 15%, which is what they normally do, but each and every year, we do our due diligence and make our argument as to saying we really need to lower that, and for a variety of reasons, and so through those negotiations, the good news is that we were able to get them to lower the stop-loss premium, and so I've made the, the necessary reductions. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the finance director, so is this 489,000, I think that's a dollar amount of the decrease, is that all due to the stop-loss premium?
Yes, that, that is all due to the stop-loss premium, yes.
Okay, I appreciate your hard work and due diligence in negotiating a lower premium for us, I think that's fantastic, however, I cannot vote to take this account down while we have a $3 million shortfall in the healthcare fund reserve projected, so I will be voting no, but I do want to say I really appreciate your, your hard work on this. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, Mr. Secretary, please.
Alderman Archeola?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Federico?
No.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Healy? Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman Marla?
Yes.
Alderman Mulrennan?
No.
Alderman Paselli?
No.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitelli?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
No.
Nine yes, six no.
I'm sorry, pass, I'm sorry, pass. Thank you. Alderman Paselli.
Just like to call for a brief recess?
Recession, please. We are out of recess. Alderman Paselli. We are out of recess. Alderman Paselli. We are out of recess. Alderman Paselli.
Make a motion for an amendment on page 85, general fund expenditure, account 05998340-524840, decrease from $900,000 to $750,000 for a new subtotal of $758,700, and new department total of $763,700.
Amendment was made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Paselli.
Thank you, Chairman Vitro, can we hear from the finance director, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Paselli, this adjustment was related, I, I appreciated the comment of Alderman Mulrennan at our Monday night's meeting, when she mentioned during the committee updates that the insurance committee had met, and that there was a settlement on the Viti matter, and as a result of that information, I was able to consult with the city attorney, and thought it would be prudent now to make this adjustment.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the finance director, so, what would happen if we didn't make this amendment? In terms of, where would that, where would that money go if it didn't get paid out? Does it go to a reserve, or would it just go back to the city surplus?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Federico, it would go back to the general funds fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
I'm sorry, through you, Chairman Vitro, to the finance director, I need clarification on it, I was at the claims meeting that you mentioned, that was just, today's Thursday, Tuesday, why did that change what you did with this? Once we settled that claim, then it freed up this money in the fund that then could be transferred, is that it? I'm, I'm not sure what, about the timing, and is that we saved money, or we save litigation expenses on that claim by the way we decided, so this enables us to use that, that funding?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, now that we have the final number, if you will, of the settlement, we were able to then know accurately what we need, and since part of the settlement will be paid out of the current fiscal year, and the remainder in the new year, I'm, my expectation is that the old year will be able to fund that first part, and then the second part will be funded by the fiscal '26 budget, so I thought, since the matter has been settled, and we know what the payment schedule will be, it made sense to lower that number. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Paselli.
Like to make a motion for an amendment on page 94, general fund expenditure, account 05998397-524221, decrease from $21,393,908 to $20,566,566, for a new subtotal of $20,566,566, and new department total of $20,566,566.
Second the motion.
Amendment was made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Paselli.
Thank you, Chairman Vitro, may we hear from the finance director?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Paselli, this relates to the other reduction that you approved, that the board approved earlier on the self-insurance contribution, this is the line item for the Board of Education, the education employees, for their portion of the, the contribution for those, for education employees, so, we basically have to split the savings between the city employees and the Board of Ed employees. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the board, I just want to say, I'm, I'm against this motion, as it would anything that's going to help, that's going to further deplete our healthcare reserves, I can't support. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Roll call vote, Mr. Secretary, please.
Alderman Archeola?
No.
Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Federico?
No.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Healy?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman Marla?
Yes.
Alderman Mulrennan?
No.
Alderman Paselli?
No.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitelli?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
No.
Seven yes, eight no.
Seven yes, eight no, amendment fails. Alderman Paselli.
I have no further amendments?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify the process, at this point, it can go to general amendments, these are all the technical, so, since we took these one at a time, the floor is still open for amendments on the rest of the budget.
Mr. Chair, recess five minutes, please. Five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess. Five minute recess.[219.43]
We are out of recess. All set, right Peter? Thank you. Okay. Alderman Paselli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll be voting on an ordinance establishing a budget for the City of Milford for fiscal year 2025-2026, setting the mill rate and establishing a due date in accordance with the provisions of the Connecticut general statutes and the Charter of the City of Milford. Whereas, the Board of Finance of the City of Milford has made estimates of the income and the amount of money necessary to appropriate for the expenses of the City of Milford for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026, and has classified such expenses under appropriate headings, departments, and appropriations as more fully appears in the proposed fiscal budget submitted to the Board of Aldermen in accordance with Article 6, Section 2 of the Charter of the City of Milford. And whereas, the Board of Aldermen, having met and conducted a public hearing, has considered said proposed fiscal budget and has made changes therein pursuant to Article 6, Section 3 of the Charter of the City of Milford. And whereas, the Board of Aldermen in its deliberation in voting on said budget has estimated revenues for the 2025-2026 fiscal year in the amount of $264,664,181 and authorized appropriations for the 2025-2026 fiscal year in the amount of $264,664,181. Now therefore, be it and it is hereby ordained and enacted by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Milford as follows: That the proposed fiscal budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026, as amended by the actions of the Board of Aldermen pursuant to law, is hereby adopted and ordered to be filed with the city clerk; that taxes for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026, at the rate of 29.55 mils upon the ratable estate within the limits of the City of Milford, are hereby laid and levied to meet the expenses of said budget; said mill rate is set on the predication that it is estimated that $445,500 of said levy will be granted for elderly exemptions (State of Connecticut), $611,205 will be granted for a local tax relief program for the elderly, $519,978 will be granted for a local tax relief program for veterans, and 97.85% of the resulting levy will be collected during the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. Said taxes shall be paid on the grand list of October 1st, 2024 and shall be due and payable on July 1st, 2025, provided that if the taxes of any person shall exceed $200, the first installment thereof but not less than one-half of the amount of such taxes shall be due and payable on the first day of July, 2025, and the remainder due and payable on the first day of January, 2026. But any taxpayer may pay the total amount of the tax for which he or she is liable at the time when the first installment shall become payable. Such tax rate shall apply to all districts of the City of Milford. Taxes to be raised: $228,177,919. Total appropriation: $264,664,181. Total revenue: $264,664,181. This ordinance shall take effect in accordance with the Charter of the City of Milford.
Time for a vote. All in favor?
No discussion. What about discussion?
You got anything to discuss? Open for discussion? Anybody have something to discuss? Andy, Mr. Alden Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Vitro. I just want to make a little statement about the budget process. You know, Connecticut is a hard state to afford. You know, we have one of the highest property taxes in the nation, we have one of the highest electricity rates in the United States, and we are one of the worst states to start a business. You know, we had a chance to lower taxes with these technical changes presented tonight to alleviate the tax burden for our neighbors. We could have helped them make their lives more affordable here, and we could have been one of the few towns in Connecticut to actually lower taxes. So I'm just shocked why we wouldn't have taken that chance to lower taxes regardless of which party sits in the mayor's chair. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have tonight the opportunity to adopt a budget that actually would have lowered taxes by some $280,000 by my quick estimation of the numbers in front of us. Instead, we're looking at a mill rate increase of .41. There was no need for that. A prudent fiscal budget was presented to us, it was voted down siriatum, and now we're faced with yet another tax increase for the people of the City of Milford. And it's really, it's disappointing that having been presented with a plan that would have allowed for tax decreases, this board decided to shoot that down and is now left with this tax increase that's in front of us. It's just, it's a shame that an opportunity like that was allowed to be wasted. In fact, and it was wasted for the worst possible reasons. It was purely political reasons rather than doing what was best for the city. It's too bad.
Alderman Paselli.
Thank you, Chairman Vitro. Rather than rehash all of the conversation that we've had earlier today, most of which, all of which I should say is available, if you would like to watch again the recording of this meeting which explained why certain votes went the way they did, and again, I'm not going to rehash each of those proposed so-called technical amendments at this time. What you have here is your mayor's budget, which led to the mill rate and the taxes that this town has. So before you're so busy to blame this on a political stunt or move related to a bunch of technical amendments so-called that were thrown before us two minutes after the meeting started, just remember where this budget came from. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Alderman Marlowe.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, I guess. I know I haven't said too much during this final process that we have here. And I think what I'd like to start with is just, again, saying that I've been involved in the town, serving the town for over 30 years now, and I will have to say that this budget process that happened this year was one of the more political ones that I've experienced. And I really think that we are missing an opportunity to help the people of Milford, the taxpayers of Milford, and we had an opportunity to do that. And I understand that politics always comes in play. I get it. But I think it was a little more prevalent in this budget cycle, and I just believe that we missed an opportunity to lower the taxes for the people of Milford. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Put it to a vote. All in favor? Mr. Secretary, roll call vote please.
Alderman Nariola?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Federico?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
No.
Alderman Healy?
Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman Marlowe?
No.
Alderman Melrennen?
Yes.
Alderman Paselli?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
Eight yes, seven no.
The vote was eight yes, seven no. The budget passes. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you for the work that was done here. We all appreciate it. The citizens of Milford appreciate it, and I want to thank Peter Aradisi. And just one point of clarification. Alderman Paselli mentioned that this was my budget. This budget came to you from the Board of Finance and you adopted it. So it's your budget, it's your tax increase.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Right. Everyone knows where the budget begins. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm not finished speaking. I just want to make you aware of, you know, where we are in the political scheme of things. And I've been on this board for 16 years, and, you know, this is my first term as mayor, and I've never experienced anything like this in my political career or my public service career. The Democratic majority of the board voted for my budget the first cycle. You voted for the tax increase, the first budget cycle, and now you're voting for another tax increase this cycle, and we had a real opportunity here to, if keeping taxes flat or if not lowering taxes. So I look forward to the next election, and I think it's going to be really important for the people to understand what happened here tonight. And to your point, Alderman Paselli, yeah, please watch MGAT, watch the video and see how things were twisted and turned, and unfortunately, the taxpayers lost. The people of Milford lost, but I'm still going to fight for those people, and I'm hopeful. And I'm looking forward to this next election, and we need a Board of Aldermen that we all can work with, that I can work with, to move Milford forward. And this is not the best example of Milford, but you know what? It's your budget, so congratulations.